When the camera, when the recording's on.
You're on.
Okay, welcome everyone to the November 9th Select Board Meeting for the Town of Barrington, New Hampshire. As Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation can take place by dialing 1-603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676-749-973, hashtag or pound symbol. Video participation can take place by typing in bit.ly backslash capital B-A-R-R-S-B. Providing public notice of the necessary information to this meeting has taken place on the town website, www.barrington.nughampshire.gov, and instructions are provided on that website for participation by phone or video. We are providing this mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access to the meeting. If anyone does have a problem with access to the meeting, please call 664-0146 or email administration@barrington.nughampshire.gov. We would adjourn the meeting if the public was unable to participate or access the meeting. So in the event that this takes place, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taking during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance in alphabetical order, beginning with Select Person Air.
Daniel Air, 334 Old Conker Turnpike. I'm alone, but you never know. That's it.
Select Person Bailey.
Thank you. George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm alone here in my office, and there's nobody here that's going to influence my vote. Thank you.
Vice Chair Nap.
Andrew Nap, 96 Lindsay Point Road. I am in the office. My wife's son and our dog are in the main part of the house.
Select Person Sakosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I'm here alone with my dog in my office.
And Select Person Hardikoff, 48 Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. My house is filled with family, including my granddaughter, daughter, son-in-law, son, husband, and my dog, but no one will be influencing my vote. Please stand and join me. Two days now before Veterans Day in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I'm gonna grab the agenda real quick, but I think the very first thing is, is our town, I can't see our town administrator, might need to tag him as well. Connor?
I'm here. Cameras on.
Yeah, public hearings from last week will take place next week, correct?
Yes, 14 days apart. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move right into appointments, which would be Chief George Joy providing the police budget presentation.
Yes, and while he pulls that up, he's got a presentation to share. Anybody following along at home, the Budget Binder is available on the town's website. The Police Department is Section 19 with all backup information. And for the Select Board and Budget Committee, attached to my report, you have the Budget Committee Questions and then a report from the Police Chief with answers. Both of those were provided in time enough to have them printed and in your packet.
Do we have anybody for the Budget Committee?
Yes, I see Steve Saunders.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I think Steve logged in.
Thank you.
So George, if you're able to share your screen and take over.
I am here. Do you have me, Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so let me, let's get the fact portion of the day out of the way first. I am giving nothing police-related, nothing crime-related, nothing violence-related. I'm a cool stories guy, so we're just gonna go with a neat little factoid about Barrington. As told by Mrs. E. Wigan circa 1930, some of the older and experienced folks in town may know about this, a lot won't. For the Hayes family, many know, is a large name in town. At one point in time, the land on the southeast side of Green Hill Road in Barrington was first settled by the Hayes family. Paul Hayes was one of the prominent settlers of the town and one of the original founders of the congregational church in town. His son James, also known as James, was the man who made Green Hill famous. About 1816, there was a very bad cold snap. This should appeal to Dan being a farmer, which ruined most of the crops planted that summer. The Wadley's history in Dover records some of that summer's bad weather. For instance, May 15, the ground was frozen hard enough to plow ground to bear a man. June 10, heavy frost. July 11, heavy frost. This killed a great deal of the corn and apples. July 15, ice formed in the Wason Tan Yard in Dover. August 20, rain and snow on the heights. August 22, heavy frost which killed corn and potatoes. So miraculously, James Hames had 10 grand, 10 acres of corn which survived all this bad weather and produced a good crop. To obtain sufficient food, people came from as far as 40 miles away, buying corn from Mr. Hayes. He charged a silver dollar a peck of corn and would not accept any payment except for silver dollar coins. Silver dollars quickly filled a good-sized trunk and James soon became one of the richest men around. Mr. Hayes died soon after the famine year though and didn't get to enjoy most of his fortune. Some of the money was lent to the Stratford Bank in Dover during a panic, but much of it was kept in an old trunk by James' widow. One night, James' grandson Jim and some of his friends were having a good time and getting drunk in the family household. A brawl broke out, as they often do, and another of James' widow became afraid that her money would be stolen and opened the trunk and took out most of the silver she could carry in her apron and quietly snuck out. She headed westward past the old Hayes family burial ground and deep into the woods, wandered around and looking for a place to bury her money, found a spot in the middle of a triangle formed by three large trees where she dug a hole and buried it. A few days later, she went back to retrieve her money, but she couldn't locate the triangle of trees again. She summoned help from her family and neighbors, but after an extensive search, they gave up without ever finding the money. Supposedly since then, many have tried and it's still out there in the wild somewhere. So there's your.
No way.
Dude, I know what I'm doing. Get in the metal detector.
There you go. Get looking, gentlemen.
I love it.
You can turn around and go to Indian Village and they'll sell them to you.
Hey Andy, you wanna tag team up? It'll be like, what's that show, Oak Island?
Come in.
If I did that correctly, you should have my screen up on.
Not yet. You might have to click one more button to select which screen. There you go.
There you go, sir. Good to go.
So the format is gonna be very similar. I'll go through, it's gonna be line by line exactly as it's presented in the budget folder. It should be very easy to follow along with. Some have changes we can address as we go along, or we can address at the end as per the wishes of the Board. So all told this year, we're looking at an $18,275 increase. That increase includes the proposed step increase, which the Board will determine at the end of the budgetary process. You can see the 2020 budget, and that is the proposed 2021 budget for us. All told, up increase of 1.28%. The salary line item, 161-403, that is the Chief and Deputy Chiefs salaries. I'm set 82.5. I'm contracted till June of next year. The Deputy Chief currently is 78-889. The full-time hourly line item is up approximately 19906. Again, that's due to the hopeful step increase. Side note that this line item does include the old shift differential line item, which does not exist anymore. This line contains the pay for the two sergeants, seven full-time officers. Our current staff summary, just to remind folks, right now, we are sitting on 11.5 officers. I hate to count Scott Young as a half, but he's a half. Every single staff analysis we have done, we are down at least two officers, not including me, so at least three officers. I am not looking for an extra officer. I just want to remind folks that we are currently and have been running understaffed and will continue to do so into the near future. The part-time hourly line, 41-235, that pays for Officer Scott Young. Used to be that we would also look at a top-end scale. We don't have to do that anymore. Due to the Wage and Benefit Survey, Scott is no longer at the top of the pay scale. Scott works approximately 1584 hours a year. That's up about 1520. The police overtime line, status quo $60,000. Obviously overtime is used to compensate officers working in excess of their standard work period. Depending on who the officer is and where they are in the rotation, this could be eight, 10, or 12-hour days. Patrol rotations are mostly 12-hour shifts. Overtime, we could hold an officer over if we have a bad wreck, if they need to do paperwork at the end of their work week. Training time in excess of their scheduled work week if they're going to a full-week school up to TSTC, if those schools ever become available again. We need to cover those shifts when they're not on the street attending training. Obviously additional coverage as we come into the winter, something to think about. If we have a real good blizzard coming, I'll often staff more folks so that we have the officers on the road that were needed. Obviously covering just open shifts. Our average for three years, 53 or 56. Our five-year average, 62,541. You'll see on review of this year's budget, we are doing really well where overtime is concerned. Again, this year is kind of an anomaly. Due to COVID, our officers haven't been taking the time off that they normally would during the year. We also haven't been sending officers away to as much training as we would normally as well, obviously due to in-person training being canceled. Police witness fees and overtime, that's just standard at 2,500 from last year. This is what we use to pay our officers to attend court on their not scheduled days. Again, this year, going into the end of the year, we're down on police witness fees as you would assume. There wasn't a lot of court. We're just kinda getting the court system rolling again where officers are being called in to testify. Holiday pay, up about $3,000. That is contractually obligated. Our employees obviously don't take holidays off. They're paid twice a year by contract for the town holidays. And if I'm going too fast, please somebody just yell at me and I'll slow down. Police earned time buyout, this is always at best a guesstimate. We obviously don't fund the full liability. We're gonna leave it alone at 16.5 again this year and essentially roll the dice. The police personnel can purchase up to 60% of their annual earned time accrued. Again, that is contractual. The maximum liability we have is 38,736, so 19,368 is about half of that liability. 16.5, we're doing okay this year. We've entered a time where it seems folks would rather take their time off and enjoy it rather than buy it. The Highway Safety Grant line is up a bit. It's 3215. That is not finalized. That is the number that we obtained when I did the grants originally earlier in the year. That line matches the 25% that we use for the Highway Safety Grants. Right now, we would normally be in quarter one. The state runs on the federal year, so we start October 1. Obviously, we're halfway essentially into November. We have not yet received a final contract from the state of New Hampshire. The pandemic has impacted highway safety, anticipated grant allocation, and a number of other issues. I'm hoping to get a final contract soon. I did get an email from Highway Safety today or yes, today or Friday saying that we were still selected. There were some allocation formulas being used. So I don't know, we may be lower than 3215 if we're not getting as much as we were originally supposed to. Police employee benefits, and this isn't a number I have any control over, we are down $15,511. I'm not even gonna try to answer the ins and outs of that. It's T.A. McKiner is infinitely more aware of law than me. This is New Hampshire retirement, insurance, et cetera. Police prosecution, you're gonna see an uptick of $3,500 here to $15,000. This was discussed. We still have some action to take on the part of the Board of Selectmen. I'm still in talks, getting some final answers, but there is a slight increase there as we move away from potentially the Sheriff's Office and go a better, different direction. Police contracts, 21,005. This covers Stratford County Dispatch, IMC, which is our internal records system, WB Mason, the Humane Society where we bring our huge number of strays in town, GPS monitoring for the cruisers, the $1,000 for the SWAT team for Stratford County to have them available for our use, alarms. We did know, I'll note that we did remove the money that was allocated for Major Waldron's from this line, and I've shifted it over to the training line. So vehicle equipment and maintenance, this was 15, this was 18. I've moved it down $3,000 to 15. I'm trying to be a little more transparent and obvious about how we outfit the cruiser. So $3,000 has been moved to 4752 to show a little bit better where that money is actually going. The ABC asked earlier in the year for clarification this year about how much we have added to this line item. To date, we've added approximately $30,825 as a result of working outside details. That's $15 an hour that is allocated for the cruisers for maintenance and whatnot every time we work a detail. So every time you see a Barrington officer working with Lewis or Eversource or whoever, that hourly wage, $15 of that is going to the cruisers. Office equipment and maintenance, that was Seacoast Computers. That's been eliminated due to the Rockport contract. Copier lease supplies, $2,500, no change. This is exactly what it says it is. It's the copier lease, check agreement, contract base rate. We do ask for a little bit extra. It comes to 2324. We need to cover copier paper staples and printing averages for when we do the dog licensing, et cetera. Communications, 10-750. This is all of our MDTs and our cruisers, long-distance consolidated first light for the fiber optic. Again, comes to about 10-485. We wanna look at 10-750 in case there are any increases mid-year. It gives us a little bit of breathing room. Police printing, again, $250, no change there. This is forms and business cards that we need to conduct business, victims' information sheets, things like that. Police conference and training, this is up $950. That up 950 is exactly what I said before. That money came from what we were allocating for Major Waldron's. I'm moving it over into training to give us a little broader base if I wanna use an indoor range somewhere else as we have this year. I don't wanna decrease the line. Probably should've asked for more, but I'm gonna leave it status quo except for that 950. Given the LEACT study that has come down from the Governor, we are going to be increasing our training significantly. Not even core training for officer skills, but just what's coming out of LEACT. Ethics, which 100% of our police officers have already done this year. Implicit bias training, duty to report training. These are all trainings that I feel strongly about that we should be doing, but it is man-hours. It's hours that we're gonna have to send officers somewhere, and I don't even know where that somewhere is going to be yet. TSTC is working on that. Director Skip is on top of it. We just need more answers, and I imagine those will be coming shortly after January. Police dues and fees is standard at $800. This is the New Hampshire Chiefs Association, the IACP, Officer Cludier becoming, still being a DARE instructor, United States Police Canine Association, New Hampshire LEAP, which is Administrative Assistant Parry's Organization. That's been $800 for quite some time. Mileage and expenses, I'm reducing that $100. I don't anticipate that we are gonna see in-person training returning, which means AA Perry won't be going as she normally was last year and at the beginning of this year, so I think we can reduce that a bit for this year. Postage, $2,000. This is all the department mailings, lawyers, et cetera. Discovery that we have to send out, dog notifications, blood results, everything post office related. Supplies, $11,000. This is all the stuff we use to do business. Tasers, ammunition, operating equipment, anything inside the office for AA Perry. This used to be two lines, off-supply line and operating supply. They combined it several years ago. Uniforms and protective gear, status quo at $6,500. This is uniforms. Normally, we overspend this line by quite a bit. This year, knock on wood, we haven't had any turnover. We've kept this line well within reason this year for that, essentially. Vehicles, so this is up $3,000. That's the $3,000 that I peeled out of the maintenance line. One new cruiser budget for this year. We will be addressing this a little bit later in the agenda as well, so I won't dig too deep. We have three cruisers, two over 100K, one spitting distance from 100,000. As I said earlier in this year several times, we need to do that new cruiser again this year. Again, I have some thoughts how to mitigate that going in, but that's where the $3,000 extra came from. It was a shift from earlier in the budget. Again, the two vehicles we auctioned off this year actually brought us in about $10,000. So here's the purchasing line. 1-06, 1-07, 1-08, none, and 09, and you're gonna see the result of that later on. 1, 1, 2, 2, 1, 1, 1, 2, none, and we're paying for that again. 1 and 2 used cruisers this year. Every way I do the math, we're essentially two cruisers every third year if you do the averages out. It's about 1.3 a year. Equipment is 13.5. This isn't gonna move down. This is computers, printers, hardware, all that. Again, we're gonna address this hopefully to take some of the sting away in later years with a warrant. Not gonna help going into this year. This also covers the ongoing cost of the body-worn cameras, which we have finally essentially finalized. I could see moving that money itself out of this line and into the contract line, depending on what folks wanna do with that. More than happy to, it's gonna be a set cost. It may make more sense to put it over under contracts. Contingency, that line simply exists at a dollar. Police clerical, this is AA Perry's 40 hours a week. Again, that's up a little bit for the anticipated step, hopefully. The police canine is standard at 2,500. This will be used for veterinary kenneling, leashes, and dog food for the incoming canine. Still pending grant status there and finding the right dog. So I know I buzzed through that. Know there's gonna be questions. Happy to answer anything at this point in time.
Thank you, Chief. Before we go to the Select Board, Advisory Budget Committee, review, comment on the presentation.
Well, you unmute yourself, Steve. George, if you just wanna cancel sharing your screen so we can see the folks talking.
This is Steve. I would have questions on the, I think I really appreciate your presentation, Chief Joy, and the answers that you gave us earlier. I would defer any questions on the equipment suggests discussion because you do have that as an agenda item layer. I hope that during that discussion, you'll be able to address, you know, year by year, what you kind of anticipate, because I, like you said, there's sort of a cluster of three high-mileage cruisers now, and then another cluster of the newer acquired that still have about the same mileage as each other. So how you can plan for the turnover of that, those cruisers, when their mileage and usage is clustered so closely together is something I hope you can address during that discussion. And that's really, I very appreciate the Budget Committee had no other question that you didn't answer. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Select Person Bailey, you had your hand up first.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Chief Joy, I have a question. When you pick the strays up, is there a back charge that goes back to the owner?
Yeah, potentially, yes, sir. So.
Potentially, or?
Yeah, if we have to transport to Pope Memorial, oftentimes that results in civil forfeitures. On the off chance that we can, as we often do, get them back here to the PD and we're able to release them in a timely manner, we quite often do not hit somebody with a civil forfeiture if we're able to deal with that without too much impact to staff.
All right. My next question is line item 4560. I noticed that the NHPSTC, they canceled the grant money. Is there any reason why they canceled the grant money?
That was many years, and I say many years ago now. That was five, six, seven years ago now, and I do not know the answer as to why they did that. I utilized grant money midway through my career to help subsidize the FBI LEADER training, and they did away with it after that fact. I don't know why though, unfortunately, sir.
All right, my last, my last was for line item 4651, and I noticed that's where your ammunition comes from. In light of the fact that the price of ammunition has increased dramatically, does your budget reflect that?
I'm gonna make do with what we have to make do with because I don't wanna come to the Board and just simply ask for more at this point in time where everybody's tight. I think we'll be okay. That may bite me later on.
So you're saying you'll have enough monies for them to keep up their scores?
Yeah, I believe so. We're doing okay ammunition-wise right now. We, several of us saw the issues coming down the road, and we ordered extra early on, and right now we're on several waiting lists to get ammo in. We kinda saw the writing on the wall and got ahead of the curve.
Thank you for that. I'm all done, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Select Person Air? There you go.
All right, on the vehicle swap-out, I never figured, it doesn't seem too transparent to me on the breakdown with the actual costs with computers and stuff on vehicles. And then, we're buying cars with 60,000 miles used, and you're saying 100,000 miles are no good? I disagree with that. Vehicles can get a lot longer than 100,000 miles these day and age. And my biggest calls and complaints from taxpayers is how many cars we have. So on any given day, when there are no details going on, there's six or seven cruisers parked at the station, and people see that and call and complain to me. And it seems like cruisers are used more for details. So with this pandemic and everything, and Lewis Street and Eversource doing their work this year, how much of a call will there be next year for details? And we're only getting $15 now to the fund for the cruiser? So it's more a benefit to the employees for overtime and their retirement to grow up their salaries. And is it really cost-effective for these details? I know it's a nice.
Details don't enter, details don't enter into retirement for new employees.
They don't?
No, they do not.
All right, that solves that one. And then, on the dog, $2,500 for the dog, that's needs to be broken down, all the time the officer spends, probably most of it for the training and stuff. Is that overtime, or is that regular time? What's the actual cost for the dog? Can't be $2,500. Can't even buy a dog for that.
No, you absolutely can't buy a dog for that, which is why we're applying for the grant. I don't even know what the final cost is gonna be this year. I haven't found the correct dog yet. Most of the training time is done on an officer's duty time. It's not overtime except in unusual circumstances, if we can find an extra school, or if they do an extra training that's outside of the normal training time. But the vast majority of training is done within the officer's normal shift. But the vast majority of training is done within the officer's normal shift.
All right, and then. So how on the vehicle rotation, I think we need to come up with a game plan on that because. It's not really utilized. That new cruiser, we got the gray one, still unmarked and that was out, you know, from day one almost. On the streets and we have all the vehicles. We're putting new miles on newer ones that we just got. How, how do you explain that?
Yeah, so the point of that new car for the time being was to keep it unmarked, much like the ghost. Uh, that is actually awaiting Mike um, to get the graphics ready to go. We've got it scheduled for two-way to be finalized and the graphics as soon as Mike is ready for us. And that will be a fully marked patrol car on the road by the end of the year is my hope.
And you know the exact cost for the swap outs for a cruiser?
No, it changed. It, it changes with every cruiser, sir. Uh, depending on what equipment will switch swap back and forth. For instance, going into next year, irregardless of what we do, we're looking at an explorer and again, we'll cover that a little bit later on on the agenda. Both vehicles body style is completely swapped out this year. So none of our equip, well, let me rephrase that. Very, very, very little of our equipment will swap into a new explorer. The light pack that we have, the edge light pack that was in the old ghost cruiser, we'll be able to use the lights. But we'll have to get a new assembly for the windshield for that to work. Uh, they've made it thinner so that none of the cages, none of the barriers or anything like that are going to work from cruiser to cruiser. Same for the Dodge. Um, so unfortunately, yeah, I can't give you an exact cost for swap outs. Because it's variable from vehicle to vehicle with what we can reuse for equipment. The charcoal charger that you were speaking of specifically, uh, we actually saved an immense amount of money going into that as far as patrol vehicle. Due to the body style change because we were able to source a bunch of free equipment from Lee PD. Who was gracious enough where they're going to a new body style to let us utilize some of that.
And then. I'm glad we're, we're, we're a step ahead on the cameras. And will that need extra computers for storage for the cameras that's fixed in the cruisers?
No, no, nothing in the cruisers. That's all going to be in-house. Um, right now, technology wise, we believe we're going to be all set. We have the schedule. With a representative to come down for the full day of training and setup. We anticipate having Rockboard on hand that day, but we believe we're going to be all set with what we have in-house.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Vice Chair Knapp. You're muted, Andy.
I clicked unmute. I don't know what happened. So Chief Joy, a couple of questions if I, I have, if you may. You said Mike was working on the graphics. You're hoping by the end of the year can, would it be possible to firm up kind of a timeframe for him on that?
It's, it's not going to be Mike that we're waiting on in the end. It's going to be two-way. They're still immensely busy outfitting cars. We're scheduled for them for early December, but I don't believe we have an exact date yet. It's going to be them that we're waiting on as my guess.
Right, but two-way is more for uh, the communication and outfitting of the vehicle, right?
Correct, as well as the cage and the transport seat.
Right, but that, that shouldn't hold up the graphics end of it, correct?
Oh, no, not at all. No.
Okay. Yep, so I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we talked about getting that car labeled that we actually do that.
Oh yeah, no, no, that is, that is the plan. We haven't finalized with Mike because I don't. The graphics on before I send it down to two-way. When they have it in there outfitting it, I'd rather not have them getting scratched up the graphics and whatnot in and out while they're going around it.
The, the other question I had was um, is Dan was on there. There was a comment uh, made around overtime. I believe not being part of benefits or something like that. I don't exactly remember how he said it. Or what the.
Overtime, overtime is part of requirement. He mentioned that the details were a way to boost retirement. Details no longer figure into an officer's retirement account. The only two individuals you have in the police department at this point in time whose details matter towards retirement are myself and Deputy Chief Brooks.
Okay, so they, they, I, I don't, I'm just for my own familiarity, they don't actually count toward benefits any or. They don't count as a benefit toward retirement any longer?
Details, correct. Overtime obviously does figure into retirement. Outside details do not figure into retirement as of. It was 2011, I believe.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, so I mean, that's just paid out at a detail rate and. I, I don't know the full background on it, so I'm trying to inform myself. I was, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, Vice Chair Knapp, I'll just chime in and um, I think this is going to be a good conversation for the board to have, especially with select personnel. Uh, mentioning the um, the rate that the town gets for the cruiser. So uh, the town on a monthly or on a quarterly basis, the town calculates the true cost of a, an outside detail. And reimburses the town, takes the $15 to into the vehicle maintenance line. And then the surplus of that money goes into the outside detail revolving fund. And so that account continues to grow. So the town is completely made whole for all benefit costs, all payroll costs, et cetera. For the outside details at the rate set by the contract. So the employees paid benefits, et cetera, proportion of workers' compensation, unemployment, et cetera. And then the balance, there's still a surplus at the end and that goes into the outside detail revolving fund. And you'll remember the select board authorized um, withdrawing, I think it was $10,000 uh, from that. Towards a purchase of one of the used cruisers. So by the very nature of that surplus continuing to grow. There continues to be excess funds, which that doesn't mean that that's an excuse not to raise the rate, raise what we charge. Maybe add more than $15 an hour um, towards vehicle maintenance or something like that. But I, I think in the, within the next couple of months, the board ought to have more of a comprehensive um, discussion about the outside detail rate. Um, and I'm happy to prepare some information for that, but just a, a quick.
Yeah, and that, that kind of led to my, the third item I wanted to talk about is. When we talk about vehicle maintenance, um, when I was looking at the same thing with the cruisers and the model on them. That, that definitely creates a level of concern. And you know, $15 a, a day. Is that what it was? $15 a day?
Per, per, per hour.
Per hour, for. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of idle time on that car just sitting there, running potentially. And you know, we're, we're seeing the impact of that in the maintenance line and in the. Mileage line as these cars are running around a lot. So I, I definitely think it's worth. Exploring that a little bit deeper to see if that's a good number or if we really should be. Higher on that.
I want to give a lot of credit to Chief Joy and certainly Deputy Chief, Deputy, Deputy Chief Brooks, excuse me. For doing a lot better job tracking the maintenance costs by cruiser. And so we don't have a lot of depth of that, of those numbers yet, uh, but we're getting there. And that's something Chief Joy and I have talked about, um, understanding those maintenance costs and using those numbers to better drive our decision-making. For things like vehicle replacement, uh, you know, like select person aired mentioned about how many miles is too many, uh, et cetera. So we're headed in the right direction and you'll remember the last two cruisers that we purchased. The chief put together a, a, an expense report. For each itemized, what the transfer of equipment cost, what the new equipment cost, what we sold the old cruiser for. Uh, and so I would expect to see that every time we transfer a cruiser, uh, just for transparency, you know, as we collect those numbers.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at that and um, you know, anything that we, where we were under a thousand bucks. In maintenance. So I was like, well, that's not so bad. And then some of them, you know, you start looking at. 15 hot, you, you can, you. Increase incrementally, which really kind of sets the tone for that change in the cost.
Absolutely.
Do you have anything else, Vice Chair Knapp?
That was all. Thank you.
Okay, um, Chief Joy, earlier this year, we had a great outpouring of public support for our police department. The funds that were collected and provided to the union were to be used for training. Have those funds been used this year?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Will they be part of next year's budget if they're not used this year?
They will not be part of the police budget at all. Those were donations to the union. They are part of union funds separate from us entirely.
Would they be reducing training?
Not if I have my way because I can't guarantee that that's money. It's, that's where it's going to go. That money has no bearing on my budget, ma'am. I have no control over that money. I, it would be even inappropriate for me to suggest what they do with it.
Okay, very good. And just um, from a nonpartisan response to um, a more global perspective. Have, has the select board at any time suggested defunding our police department?
No, not at all. In fact, the select board has always been, well, in my memory, um, supportive of us. The town as a whole is very supportive of the police department in general. And again, nonpartisan, that was a group that did what they did and we're thankful for the support as we are from everybody else in town. Uh, the town of Barrington historically has treated us very well.
Yes, well, I, I, I hope that you feel the support from the select board. Because we certainly feel very lucky for all of our officers and the hard work that he and she perform here in town. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to public comment.
I see a hand up for George Bailey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you. One, one last thing before Chief Joy goes, taking into account uh, what uh, select person air and select person app had to say. And looking at it here by vehicle for the cost that we get for uh, the rental of the vehicle. Is there some way that we can uh, track uh, the rental fee or the hours as either way? Per vehicle so we know uh, how many, to go along with how many hours of sit idle and go along with uh, how many hours that. It would help also uh, to understand whether vehicles aren't being used. And I think that'd be something I'd like to see for uh, next year's budget, not for this one, but for next year.
I believe that data we can compile. Uh, also going into this year, and I know it's not a question that's been asked, but it kind of. It tailors along with what you're saying, so I'm going to go down the road. Going into the next rotation, I asked Sergeant Barber to prepare uh, vehicle rotation and assignments. So along with tracking that, we'll actually have a better idea of what vehicles are being used, when, by whom. We can start track, tracking driving patterns uh, and actually maintenance by driver as it boils right down to it.
Chief, I really appreciate that because that, that really will give us a handle on a lot more. Thank you very much.
Select personnel, you have your hand up. Did you want to speak again?
Yes, uh, this is a maintenance thing though. You can put an hour meter on any vehicle and track the hours on that vehicle. And there's a conversion for mileage for uh, hours thing. And there, there's only one or two hour meter companies out there, like all my equipment has it and stuff. It's very inexpensive to put on a car. So you know the hours, it's on that engine's run.
I believe, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize. I believe our cruisers, and I'm going to have to check, I believe the cruisers have electronic hour meters in them. I'm going to have to double check that, but the deputy chief and I are both sitting here and we're, we're both of the opinion that they're in there.
I have it on my truck. They might, they might have it. I don't know.
Okay. Um, select board, any other questions, concerns, comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize if anybody saw me make what looked like an offensive face to anyone while I'm sitting here. That was not the case. I just knocked my budget binder all over the place with all of my paperwork. So I was like groaning in pain as that was happening. I wasn't groaning at Dan or Chief Joy if anyone's.
The problem with virtual meetings, Vice Chair Knapp. Thank you. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, comments or concerns, excellent, comprehensive police budget presentation. Thank you, Chief Joy. We will move on to public comment. Public comment is 15 minutes with three minutes allotted per person. I'm starting a timer now. If you wish to speak, please mouse over your screen. And um, you'll see a hand. It's a command usually in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. You can click on that. Or you can dial 6640146 if you wish to speak. Or you can write to administration@barringtonnewhampshire dot newhampshire.gov. Have I got that right, TA McGyver?
That's the one.
Okay, and you have seven more seconds to do all of that, folks, or we are closing. Public comment.
In that seven seconds, I'll just wish a happy birthday to our finance administrator's daughter, JoJo, whose birthday is tomorrow and I understand is watching at home right now.
Very good. Um, review of the meeting minutes from October 26th. Any corrections, errors, omissions that you need to see included? I felt it was a um, go ahead, go ahead. Um. Did you have your hand up now? I thought it was a uh, full, full reflection of the way that the meeting went. And if you've read through the meeting minutes and would like to make a motion, please feel free. Any, okay, we have a motion from. Select person Bailey. Do we, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Vice Chair Knapp. Roll call vote beginning with select personnel, please.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Knapp eye.
Jim, can you unmute?
Secoshai.
Thank you. And Hardikoff eye. The meeting minutes are accepted. Thank you all. Those were the October 26, 2020 meeting minutes. I should have made sure we made that clear. Staff report by the town administrator, McGyver, please.
I have nothing additional. I had sent out uh, to the board uh, ahead of time, one request for an additional old business item. An asset management grant designation of authority. So I'll uh, request that at the beginning of old business, but nothing uh, right now.
Okay, and then moving on to our municipal office administrator Cottle.
Uh, good evening. For your view and signature, we have two abatement requests, one due to a mailing issue, the other due to a bank error. Uh, the meeting minutes that were just approved and the auctioneer agreement for the 2020 town land sale. Is that?
Very good. Thank you so much. Um, moving on to old business and. TA McGyver, you wanted to, I'm sorry, what, what?
Uh, you just, you'd made a comment. I just wanted to correct it for the video recording. You made a comment about the 1026. Meeting minutes being approved. These were the meeting minutes from.
Well.
That was my fault.
I'll apologize. My agenda includes acceptance of October 26th, so thank you for the correction. In fact, it was meeting minutes for the Barrington, New Hampshire select board meeting held on Monday, November 2nd of 2020. Thank you, Vice Chair Knapp.
My apologies.
Dan, is there something you need to bring up before we move to old business?
Yes, I, any wet things needed on themself? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, TA McGyver has requested under old business that we start with the asset management grant that was added to the meeting.
Yes, I had sent out, um, this is a form, uh, the asset management grant opportunity from NHDES, which is approved by voters earlier this year. The, everything is moving forward um, as on schedule, as anticipated. Um, one of the final pieces of paperwork is a designation of authority. So this would be the select board designating that the select board chair or the town administrator can sign uh, documents. Uh, pertinent to the asset management grant process.
Okay, so you're asking for a motion to designate the town administrator or the select board chair as the signatory on asset management grant material?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
And do I have a second? I have a second discussion. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Um, just under discussion, I just want to make sure. Standpoint that we agreed to this grant only on the premise that. The loan, that we got the grant money to take care of the loan amount so that there would be no um, budget. Pact or no fund impact for the residents of the town.
Exactly. Yep, so it's a, it's a reimbursement program. But the, it's structured in a way so that you, they know you're approved before you spend a dime. So we have a, a contract, uh, you know, with the grant engineering consultant. But that contract isn't activated until governor council signs off on the project. And so the. the scope is thirty thousand dollars, which is what um we have pre-approval from the state and we'll have final approval from the governor's office. So the town will have no financial liability until we know that everything will be reimbursed.
I, right, I just would like to have the um authority on that, the motion um to reflect that, that not that, that we're designating authority with the condition that um there are to be no, that be covered in expended um with the notion that there is um a hundred percent or no lot of pocket expenses from the town.
So I would then um re- ask that.
So moved.
Okay, so select person Bailey has amended the motion. Is there a second on the revised motion? Very good. Thank you, select person air. Roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Secosh, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. Um, moving on to exemptions and credit warrant articles. I would like to make a motion when you're ready, um but the board is being asked to consider any board-sponsored adjustments. We agreed last year to increment to change the exemption for um ser- total service-related disability. And we've done a lot of analysis of the impact on that. But it is my understanding that the select board last year agreed to this incremental change. So I would ask that that be moved from two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars placed as a warrant article to move it to three thousand and fifty dollars this year. That in combination with the four hundred and fifty dollar all veterans exemption would bring total disbit- total service-related disability exemption to three thousand five hundred. So that is my motion to move it from two thousand five hundred and fifty as a warrant article to three thousand and fifty.
Point of order?
Yes.
I would ask Chair to uh uh or have Connor work with you to uh with the understanding that the uh RSA does not allow us to combine the two of those together. They would both have to be two separate articles. I understand you want to go to the total of that amount of money, but that's, that's how it reads. It can't be, it can't go under uh service-connected total disability. So that would only come to uh thirty-one hundred. If we did it that way, Madam Chair.
If we did it and brought it to three thousand fifty and was also getting four hundred and fifty, it would bring it to three thousand five hundred for each veteran.
Yes, okay.
Our goal, our goal is to someday get to that total. There is no way to exclude the all veterans exemption. If you get one, you can't have the other. That's not how the language is written. I've already reviewed this. So um, so my motion is to move it from two thousand five hundred and fifty to three thousand fifty.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, discussion, go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
Yep, just for a point of clarity, the 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 fully funded amount, if we went to a hundred percent, is four thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Sure. So in our case, we would someday get to four hundred and fifty veterans, three thousand five hundred and fifty total disabled service-related.
Right, okay, thank you.
So we have a first and a second, more discussion, but um go ahead, select person air.
Well, this is a warrant article.
This is a warrant article placed before the townspeople. I mean, the impact is to them. The nineteen, the expected nineteen thousand five hundred dollars in reduced revenue is going to impact all townspeople. But, and, I'm sorry, select person air, you done, okay, you're done. Go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
Okay, and I would just uh from a transparency point, there are two members of the select board who will benefit from this.
That is not true. There is one select board member.
I'm the, I am the only member, Andy.
I am not, I am not a household that currently has a total service-related disabled veteran, just an old retired air.
Retired one, that's right. Sorry. Thank you for, I just wanted to make sure that in all aspects of transparency, we're.
Excellent point, but I would have brought it up, I promise. Thank you. Okay, I have a first and a second. If there's no other discussion, could I have a roll call vote beginning with select person air?
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll second the motion if Mr. Bailey feels more comfortable.
No, I think full disclosure, we, yeah, I I think we've had full disclosure. We have a first and a second. Go ahead, roll call vote beginning with select person air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The warrant article will read um three thousand fifty dollars this year. Thank you all. Next up is the Swains Lake Dam Drawdown Plan, a riveting piece of reading material that I will leave up to many of you to ask questions about if you so have them. Did any of you have any questions about the drawdown draft plan before we place a motion before you?
I just have a question. Did, did uh the town have a chance to review this?
I'm sorry, did who?
Did Connor have, town administrator, do you have a chance to review this document?
Absolutely, yeah. Um, the road agent and I have worked closely with Stevens Associates through the development of this document. Through quite a few meetings, a few drafts before this final draft. We're comfortable with the document. Uh, the, the plan from the beginning was to finalize a draft, get it out into the community for public comment. The select board, Department of Environmental Services, Fish and Game, the Lake Association. Uh, and so that's what stage we're at now. Uh, and so happy to take any input from the select board on uh anything they'd like to see changed, added, or adjusted.
Thank you.
I personally would like to, I would like to see it again after the um the DES, Fish and Game, and Swains Lake Association have made any changes to it. Go ahead, uh, select person air.
Uh, why didn't you come in front of the conservation group?
Happy to uh include the Conservation Commission um as a, as a requested requested organization for public comment.
Vice Chair Nap?
Yep, I was actually going to echo the same thing that I wanted, I would have liked to, I'd like to sit back after all other board, state departments have made additional changes. And the only thing that I noted on there is there's a a fair amount of talk about um now I want to draw a blank on the road with uh, not Lee Oaks.
Lakeside Oaks.
Lakeside Oak, thank you. Road, uh, but again, no alternative plan around that. Which I think it, you know, look at how do you operate in a crisis situation and you document what your alternative plans are, your, your BCPs, Business Continuity Plans, and I, I just didn't see anything to that in here, so I do think it should be something that's mentioned into how do you deal with situations. It talks about urgent drawdown, but it doesn't talk about mitigation of the situations that exist.
So Vice Chair Nap, the, there's an emergency management plan which exists for the dam, uh which has what you're talking about. This is just strictly a drawdown plan geared towards the um annual seasonal um and emergent drawdowns. Um, and it, there's even a clause in it that says this isn't meant at all to supplement the emergency management plan for the dam. You know, just as a, an additional guidance document for transparency for the community.
Yeah, I read that. Um, I did read that. I, the only thing was I did not uh, I, I didn't I, I didn't go back and look at the emergency management plan, and if it's in there, that's great. I just, I don't remember seeing it the last time I looked at it, but it's been a, probably a couple of years since we looked at that the last time.
Okay.
Go ahead, select person air.
Has the road association or the owners of Lakeside Oaks been notified of their culvert and stuff, it may be in failure? Has DES been notified yet?
Um, I'm, I, I guess I'm not sure how that question's different than the last time you asked it. When I said um at the select board's direction, we have not notified the lake, the road association members requesting them to replace the culverts. As far as DES, DES, um I guess maybe preliminary conversations with, have happened with DES about permitting in that area. But we're um, you know, we're not necessarily at that stage yet. As you know, we're actively pursuing alternative funding sources uh for uh the work. So some of the engineering consultant work that happens um may involve additional conversations with DES uh for cost analysis and things like that. But no, no different from uh the last meeting when you asked.
Thank you.
Okay, so it doesn't look like any action is required at this time. If you have questions beyond what you've asked tonight, please um bring them up to the town administrator and we'll wait to see the reviewed document in case there's revisions to it. Thank you, TA McGyver.
Yes.
On to the sports equipment drive distribution. There is a request by a local Barrington student who has run a sporting equipment drive that this student be able to use for eight hours, four on November fourteenth, four on November twenty-first, a portion of our public safety building parking lot area and um a small area to the right of the building as you're facing the front doors for distribution. And I should say COVID-safe distribution because there's a good plan for masking and separation of tables and hand sanitizer. So um discussions, go ahead, um, select person Secosh.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, and your motion is to allow usage of that building on November fourteenth and November twenty-first, four hours each?
Correct.
Okay, and do I have a second? So a select person, I think select person air, did you have a question? I'm sorry, you have a question. So I have a second by select person Bailey, and I have a comment or question from select person air. Go ahead, Dan.
What, was this uh change in location? I got three phone calls on the situation. Explained that everything was all permitted at the uh transfer station. So what, what is it changing now?
Um, so the feedback that I heard and certainly passed on um after the last meeting was that the board didn't really feel like the transfer station would be a suitable location for distribution. Just with folks, um, you know, instead of a drop-off and go, it's, you know, more of a not necessarily try on, but size up and and evaluate what's, what options are there. So it, for me, it was board feedback that suggested a different location and uh the fire chief was on the meeting and said, hey, you know, maybe a, a, a bigger space and off the beaten path be a better location for distribution. So that's the reason for the change of location, as I understand it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
Yep, I was just uh, one of the things that I looked at when I was looking at the flow, with each table having um being designated to have one specific piece of sports equipment, the way it's set up, everybody comes in and rotates around all the tables. They, it may actually be a little easier and a little more turn the tables so that the only table you're act, so you have almost like aisles and the only one you're traveling around is the table of the sport you're looking for. That way you're, you're, you're not passing around everybody in that way. But otherwise, I think it's a great plan and um happy to see that he had a lot of donations and activity to participate.
Excellent. The only thing I think of, Andy, is if there's a parent looking for more than one sport of equipment, they'll want to pass through the entire area. So I guess, yeah, I guess it will be up to the young man running it to see who he thinks um he'll be distributing to. So I have a motion and a second. And could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Secosh, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Thank you so much. Um, all, on here for old business is the new town government Facebook page. TA McGyver, I assume you just want to give us an update.
Yes, absolutely. So um special thanks to our very own Chairperson Hardikoff for helping the town promote what has uh grown in numbers by quite a few hundreds since it was first started. So it was a great opportunity with the election uh to provide folks a little peek behind the curtain to what was happening, you know, closer to real time. So that was a good excuse um to build some content and engage with residents. We'll continue to look for those excuses, but we'll also continue to welcome any suggestions or feedback from the board or community members uh of what you'd like to see. So uh please definitely steer folks in that direction um and promote it as you can, and we look forward to continuing to grow. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, yeah, I saw that it began to um become popular very quickly. That was exciting. Okay. Moving on to new business, I hope you've all read through the transfer station committee recommendations of the review of the change of hours and a couple of the highlighted areas that have been updated as recommendations from the committee members. I think if you read through, you probably found that the group was recommending the adjustment of hours based upon usage and feedback from the residents in town so that the facilities are better meeting the needs of Barringtonites. Before anyone makes a motion on adjusting the transfer station and approving the changes to the user fee schedule, questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead, select person air.
Um, yes, I looked at the prices and stuff, and I do haul a lot of trash and stuff to different recycling places and waste management. It's very reasonable and it's really a good deal. It's cheaper than what I pay.
Excellent. Oh, thank you for that feedback. Vice Chair Nap?
Yeah, um, I was looking at the information. Sorry, I'm trying not to spill everything all over the place again here. Um, the the only, I, I like the transfer station fees. I think the adjustment is art, I was really happy to see that they um did a two-tiered price on the, on trucks bringing in material. The one thing that caught my attention on the adjustment of transfer station hours was they went uh one noon to six and then eight to three. I would have stated, my recommendation would be to stay at one to six and then have eight to four because I think cutting out on a Saturday at three o'clock makes it really difficult for people who have things planned in the earlier part of the day.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Is that a motion?
No, I'm not, I, I don't think it was a motion yet. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? I'm gonna ask Erin Paradise to weigh in on the hours adjustment since that's where the questions came from. Erin, do we have you on here?
Hi.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Erin. Do you want to weigh in on the change of hours for Saturday?
I guess it, it doesn't really, you know, the, the numbers came back from the attendance, you know what I mean, on, on what we thought would be good. I mean, the biggest takeaway from the in-person survey was to have no impact to the operating budget. And I guess by any way of doing that, you know, it was just that a ten-hour for a Saturday is a very long day. You know, and it was just seeing what we could do to kind of alleviate. I know people do it all the time, um but it is if you've been there on a Saturday, you know what it's like. Um, so you know, really, it, it doesn't, it wasn't specific to eight to three. That was something we came with so we could kind of do it earlier for Tuesday because honestly, we have people who are lined up at twelve-thirty waiting to get into the gate for one. So really, it's you know, we don't know how it's gonna work till we do it type deal. Um, so it really does not matter, I guess, how we shift the hours. I don't know if that helps your decision-making, but um.
Chairperson Hardikoff?
Yes.
Hey, just two quick things. One, I would recommend to the board that if the board wants to recommend something different than what the transfer station committee put forward, that it first go back to the transfer station committee uh before coming to the select board. That group's been working really hard to make thoughtful recommendations. And I, I wouldn't necessarily want to see something change without having, their having an opportunity to review it. The second thing, I think it's super important to make sure that we get an hours change right the first time. This definitely isn't something that needs to be decided tonight. But I, I think, you know, bundling these changes to go into effect January first and kind of having that be the, the one time that, that big changes are made at the facility, whether it be hours or fees or anything else is really important. So. So certainly don't feel like you have to make the decision tonight. And if you'd like to put it back to the committee, you could. But I think getting it right and having the change only happen once is important. Thank you.
Go ahead, select person air.
Yeah, I personally do not use the transfer station, but it's a steady flow. And I agree with Connor. Had review and thought out right because I, there's a steady flow Saturday lined up in the morning and it's steady flow all afternoon. I drive by.
Okay. Vice chair now, did you have something else you wanted to, you're muted.
I'm unmuted. I was just waiting patiently. My comment was going to be, I would make a motion to approve the transfer station fees. The other item, I was going to make a recommendation that we send back the transfer station committee because I know keeping hours to the point where there was no impact. And I like the increased hour on Tuesday, but I also don't think we should extend the hours on Tuesday in that regard anymore because we're taking away from our Saturday time already by an hour. So I would recommend sending it back to the transfer station committee with that note.
Okay, so motion to approve the user fees and motion to move the transfer station hours back to review of the transfer station committee.
Yes, with a one to six and eight to four. And I'll make the motion.
One to six and eight to four PM on Saturday. And that's a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you for the second, select person Bailey. Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia, I.
And Hardikoff, I. Thank you all.
And Tracy, just to let you know that the next transfer station review committee meeting is, we'll have that on the November 23rd. So that will be the next time that we meet and can, I'll give them these new hours and then we'll have the information the following week.
Excellent. Okay.
One clarification, if I may, is there, is there additional information the board would want to see to support the recommendation? Because I know that the review committee did traffic counts and they also did an in-person and online survey to arrive at the recommendation. So, you know, I think they're trying to take a thoughtful approach to it. Does the select board want to see more details about that? Or what is it the board's looking for? Certainly, if the board wants to make a decision absent of their recommendation, you know, you have the power to do that. But I want to make sure that they feel valued in the process that they're undertaking. And so if you'd like to see further behind the curtain and what is guiding the recommendation, let me know.
I think it would be helpful to just do a count from three to four for the next two Saturdays. Does anyone disagree with that idea?
My general thought is, is they probably already have counts for that. So we'll see what they've already done.
Okay, so, so don't redo the counts. Look at the counts that were done from three to four PM.
We, can I just speak, are you looking at traffic counts or are you looking at something else? Because we only did a traffic count for one Saturday and one Tuesday. That's when we were able to get the, the traffic counter.
Okay, statistically, that, that doesn't really mean a whole hill of beans, but at least it's some basis of from.
So we want to count for the next two Saturdays between three and four PM?
I don't think it's a bad idea. And I, I mean, the other piece that I look at is if we're adjusting down my recommendation on four also aligns with the daylight savings time where you're wrapping up before darks.
Okay, so I think it would be helpful, Erin, to know how many people are entering the facility from three to four PM for the next two Saturdays. And then the transfer station committee can have that data as well to make their review of this request.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the 2021 Cruiser pre-order. I assume you all read through your meeting material and the select board is being asked to consider ordering the 2021 Ford Explorer that we have discussed previously with $10,000 from the vehicle maintenance account line. Do you need to hear from the police chief or the town administrator?
Nope.
Or did you read all the material and someone's ready to make a motion? Go ahead, vice chair now.
The only piece that I wanted is we talked about there, in, in the information, you talked about, Chief Joy talked about two Cruisers. He talked about Cruiser number two with, which is the 2013 Taurus with 100 and I forget the exact number of mileage, but then he also talked about a 2017 Explorer. And I just, so you've actually nailed down which unit we're talking about. Pick one.
We got you on here, Chief Joy?
You do if I'm, am I audible?
You are audible. Thank you.
So yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Nap. I appreciate it. We are going to look at the unit seven, which was the 2016 Explorer. That's got 112, 835 on it. For just note, it was 102, 645 on unit two. Unit seven is the vehicle I'm looking to get rid of. Along with having higher mileage, it's got a fairly decent maintenance cost attached to it as well. Not as high as some, lower than others. It also has a transmission issue creeping up on it. And that's, unit seven is the vehicle that I've been driving for some time, milking that along. I don't know what the exact problem is, but I do know it's going to rear its ugly head. So unless something really bad happens with unit two, unit seven will be what's going out the door.
Okay, my, the only concern I have with that is that, is that, is unit two continues to age. One of the notes you had made is that no one likes driving the Tauruses because they don't fit in them. And we have two of these cars now that nobody's driving and we're piling the miles on the Explorers and the Chargers. And these things are just aging out. So I want to make sure we have a reasonable game plan to move them along if we're not using them.
We do. And again, that goes along to the Cruiser assignment that I alluded to earlier. Luckily, I have two individuals who actually do like the Tauruses. Officer Young, surprisingly enough, and Officer Cludier both prefer it. Unit six is the primary patrol Taurus. And again, because of the way the schedule shakes down, at least for the next rotation, I have them on opposite ends of the week so that Michelle and Scott will both be driving unit six. Unit two is currently assigned to Deputy Chief Brooks. So that's why that mileage isn't creeping up. And again, it's because I, quite frankly, don't trust that car right now in a full patrol capacity.
Okay, select person air, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can make a vote on this because a lot of information came out earlier. I need more answers, a better rotation and better exploitation and stuff. So I'll wait for the information to come. Thank you.
So I'm not sure what information you're looking for.
It does seem that there's like rotations and stuff and vehicles and stuff, all these things that are coming out. At any given time, there's so many extra vehicles sitting there waiting for details. And we need all these vehicles. Why did we buy ones with 60,000 miles? They're only good for 100. That's only good for a year or two. They're putting 30, 40,000 miles on the Cruisers now.
TA McGyver, it's my understanding that we talked about the purchase of this particular item and the barriers to ordering and outfitting and how long it was taking during the pandemic. Did we not discuss this at an earlier select board meeting?
Yes, a couple.
Okay, so go ahead, vice chair now.
Yep, I was just going to make the motion to approve the $10,000 deposit for the new Cruiser and move forward with the planned obsolescence of unit seven, I believe it is.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Thank you, select person Bailey. Seconded that. Any other questions, concerns before we move to roll call vote? Roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air.
Air, now.
George, can you unmute yourself for the purpose of the recording?
I'm sorry, Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia, I.
Hardikoff, I. The motion carries. Thank you all. Next up is the 2021 Audit RFP Request for Proposals. I know that at prior meetings, we have discussed our audits and discussed that while we have an excellent auditing firm, that it becomes important to evaluate and shake things up at different times. So I hope you've all read the request for proposal. And if you have any other comments, questions, or concerns about it, now is the time to speak. Seems to me that's a very comprehensive RFP.
Credit to our finance administrator, Amy Doherty, for taking lead on that. It's a very well put together document.
Yeah. So anything that you'd like added, any questions you have about the proposal? Anything you'd like to see different before we consider a motion authorizing the advertisement for the services? Would anyone, yeah, go ahead, select person Sakoshia. I can't see you, but I think you wanted to speak.
Yeah.
I'm so.
A motion to accept that.
Okay.
Proposal.
Yep, do I have a second? I have a second from select person air and I have a comment or question from vice chair Nap. Go ahead, Andy.
Sorry, when you asked, I had myself muted and I was like, darn it. On the, what would be page two, under the terms of engagement, it says, this audit shall cover the period of January 1 through December 31st, 2021. But page four, it says, the anticipated audits will be started in early March. The auditor shall submit a report of financial statements and supplemental schedules no later than May 1st. Is this, are we talking about running into 2020? Or should?
No, that was a, that was a great ques, great catch, 2021. And just for transparency for the board's purpose, the, on the cover page also, it says Thursday, December 30th. December 30th is a Wednesday. So thank you. No, it's intending to start with our next financial audit, which would be the audit of our 2020 financials.
Okay, because I was looking at this and I'm like, wait a minute, this, these dates don't match up or make sense.
No, great. Thank you.
So we have a motion for authorizing the advertisement in a second. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Maybe I just didn't, I was looking through it and I haven't seen anything that says the select board has the right of choice to pick the right candidate out on it, whether it's, you know, that catch-all statement we put in there. So if we think the number two individual, the second highest, the second lowest individual, we can select that person we have for the right of selection.
Well, I think we have that with any RFP, don't we?
Yes.
I just choose who we want. We just need the three prices.
Yeah, I, I think, I think with any RFP for the town, that it's the select board that would be reviewing. So I have a motion and I have a second for authorizing the advertisement of this RFP with, go ahead, vice chair Nap. You had another question?
No, I would just like to make, ask that the, that the motion be to note the corrected document changes noted.
Okay. And go ahead, but select person air.
First of all, comment, Andy, when you turn your head, I get broken pieces of your words.
Same.
Same.
Yeah, if you're not talking straight on to your microphone, Andy, it does, it does fade you in and out.
Okay, I tried turning my volume down because I knew a lot of feedback. Maybe part of the issue.
Okay.
Looking at my documents and that may be what's screwing it up. I'll work on that.
Okay, so roll call vote considering authorization with the amended verbiage mentioned by select person, vice chair Nap, sorry. Roll call vote beginning with select person air.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia, I.
And Hardikoff, I. The motion carries. Thank you all. The New Hampshire Division of Forest and Land Grant Acceptance. So the fire department was awarded the $2,600 grant. We knew that it was being applied for. Matching funds were properly budgeted for. The select board's being asked to consider authorizing the acceptance of the $2,600 forest and land grant. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Or would someone like to make a motion? Go ahead, vice chair Nap.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions tonight. It, when I read through the information on this, it's a, it's a t-shirts and it's a matching grant. Can, can I get some clarity on that? Because I'm struggling with the idea of spending 2,600 bucks on t-shirts.
They're not.
T-shirts ain't cheap.
They're not t-shirts. They're nomex, long-sleeved button-down forestry shirts to use during for brush fire and forest fire, fighting operations to protect the firefighters more than somebody showing up with just a t-shirt.
Yeah, I assume that they meet the standards for fire retardants.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's why they're so expensive. They're about $130 apiece.
Very good.
Thank you for the clarity.
Do I have a motion to consider authorizing the acceptance of the forest and land grant? I have a motion, but do you have a question, George? You making the motion?
I'm making a motion, Madam Chair.
And do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Okay, I have Nap and Sakoshia both declaring I and Hardikoff, I. Motion carries. Thank you all. Scouting for food drive at the transfer station. Select board is being asked to consider the Boy Scouts being able to collect food, I assume, for our local pantries and programs feeding our community at the transfer station. And that would have been beginning with this past Saturday and carry us through November 14th.
I'd like to make a motion.
I have a motion. I have a second from select person air based on the gesture of his hand. Is that correct, Dan? Thank you. Could I have a roll call vote on the acceptance of allowing the Boy Scouts to promote and collect food?
Air, I and I'm very thankful for it.
Okay.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia, I.
And Hardikoff, I. Thank you very much to the Boy Scouts, folks. We hope you head down and drop off food for the kids to help.
I did know, Tracy, one of the dates is two days ago. It was this past Saturday.
That is correct. And I gave permission for them to be there because they asked at the last minute, knowing we'd bring it before.
Oh, my goodness.
We've let, we let them in the past. I had a feeling you folks would approve it. So thank you all. Select person reports, please, beginning with select person air. Let's go in, in alphabetic order.
Yes, conservation, had a good meeting and everything. And there's improvements to a gravel pit. And then we spent a lot of time in the MOU and it's very positive and something's coming to the board soon. I don't want to quote anything yet, but we made a lot of good work and it's coming soon. I can guarantee it.
Excellent.
Then I shared some information with the town administrator on a book about the, the book that's for sale is online. I found it on my smartphone. And then that little tiny library went up Sunday. There's a nice little ceremony for that.
Excellent.
And the town and the land is going to be meeting soon.
Okay, select person Bailey, got a report out?
Yes, ma'am, I do. We had the library had the meeting and it went well. It's just, it's just a general meeting. That's all it was. Nothing to report back as, as a highlight.
Very good. And vice chair now.
Yes, Tuesday, the planning board had their meeting. I was not there because I was at voting, but they covered a fair amount based on the agenda. I won't really get into any of them because I don't know kind of the crux of how everything went. I haven't seen any notes or amendments on that or motions, things like that that were done. How, how, I'm losing it at this point. It's been a long day. Yeah. Yeah, so uh, there, that, that was all covered. Um, I also ended up um getting, yeah, hopefully everyone has seen or probably most people have not seen, but Connor had shared some information on dark fiber pricing, if you connect the highway department um to the uh, to our, our loop. Um, the um Connor also shared the election wage information. Marcia did send me the information that I had spoke of last Monday, so I will get that. I, um, so I wanted to bring that in front of the board and the general comment around it was, we want to make sure that the board um supports and is willing to support that in general, the planning board's in support of the sidewalk and safety improvements in the Route 9 and 1 area to support development of the town center, which the town for over 10 years. There've been a number of resident developments approved um and proposed that will contribute to the necessary foot traffic and density that supports commercial slash retail development. The Barrington Middle Schools with, located within the area, proposed for sidewalks. The side play a crucial role in Barrington's safety development area. The Barrington Select Board has unanimously supported the project is what their recommendation from, and they've updated the attached cost estimate for the 80/20 split with it. Um, it would not guarantee that the town will have to pay the full 20%. That would be negotiated with New Hampshire DOT as the project moves forward. Um, it is guaranteed that the town would be responsible for the maintenance costs. Um, so we would have to figure all of that out. If the project into the 10-year plan, it would be constructed in 2031 or 2032. The estimated 20% share in $20,000 is um just shy of 122,000. 9/11/05, 10 years obviously is a long wait, wait. Um, has the means it would be worth considering in the future, uh, doing a tap round. That can be an 80/20 split would be, but it'd be um slightly less than we're talking um five years out, not 10 years out. So that is something, um, it's not, it, it was, it was on as my report. It's not on as a motion, so I don't know how, if the board would want to proceed or if they would like me to all the language to it, but I wanted to put that in front of the board to uh make a decision on, and there is a technology committee meeting tomorrow, which is the last thing I have.
So, Andy, I personally would like to see the language written out and put on an agenda. Um, hang on, select person Erin, I'm gonna hear a report out from um select person Sakosh.
So, uh, we had our meeting on Monday night and uh department, um, meetings are Monday nights, so I haven't had a chance to catch up with Sarah yet today. Um, but as you guys know, we're working on the MOUs and uh still trying to come to a head and make a decision that'll best suit everybody.
Okay, and um I was not in the ABC meeting. I was at the polls and then ended up working late, and I was not in the transfer station meeting, but you pretty much have seen the result of all of that hard work in today's meeting and reviewing all of that. I do not get to make a decision on my own. In reference to vice chair Nap and Andy, because a lot of your speech for some reason was going in and out and in and out, I would like to see something written up in reference to a motion, and I, I need the rest of the board to weigh in on that. I'm one of five.
I'll go along with it.
Okay, and does everyone else feel, uh, we don't need a vote, but consensus-wise, would you like to see something written out?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
See it on paper.
Yep, go ahead, select person Erin. You've been waiting for a while.
We, we're talking about the sidewalks and the improvements of the, yes, I would want more information because we're gonna have to add equipment to the highway department to maintain walkways. So, we're, we're not equipped for the day to do that.
Okay. Well, let's wait. We'll put it on as an agenda item and discuss the full scope at that time. Okay, um, do we have any need, Connor, for a non-public?
No.
Very good. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please, at 8:05 PM?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And a second, roll call, please?
Bailey, aye.
Go, go ahead, Andy.
Nap, aye.
Hold on, do we have second public comment?
Oh, you know what? Thank you, point of order. For 30 seconds, I will hold this meeting. And we will ask the public if they would like to speak. If you would like to speak, please mouse over your screen in the upper right-hand corner. You will find a hand. You can click on that if you would like to provide a total of 15 minutes, but a maximum of three minutes per person. You can also call 664-0146. You can also email administration@barrington.nuhampshire.gov. You have 10 seconds. Otherwise, this meeting will be adjourning and I will be running in the next room to see my very cute two-month-old granddaughter.
She needs to be a.
Have the gift.
I thought you were talking about the New England Patriots for a minute.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Night.
Oh, oh, we gotta make a vote. We paused it. You still.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call votes, select person Erin.
You're, you're.
Aye.
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 Have a good night now.
Thank you.
See you guys.